There are 253 town meeting members. 127 constitute a quorum. The constable informs me that 127 members are present. The eighth session of the 250th annual meeting of the Town of Amherst will come to order. Precinct 1 caucus failed to get a quorum, and I guess they're exploring the situation. Everybody knows that these seats are reserved to elected town meeting members. So I will recognize Mr. Weiss for two procedural motions. Mr. Weiss.
I move that Article 20B be considered after Article 47.
You may speak to it, Mr. Weiss.
What we are hoping for on 20B is an appraisal.
The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Mr. Weiss.
I move that Article 40 be considered after Article 24.
Motion is to consider Article 40 immediately after Article 24. Motion has been seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Weiss.
Article 24 is now first tonight, and a representative from the university campus, community campus coalition would like to be present for this article. And since 40 is likely to, would have come up next week, she could not attend next week, we thought it would be best if she could be here to answer questions. So we'd like this to be heard tonight.
Any further discussion of the scheduling of Article 40 immediately after Article 24? Holes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous vote. We go now to Article 40, nuisance house. See if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adding the following bylaw, nuisance Ms. Stein will make the motion.
I move that the town adopt the nuisance house bylaw as printed in the warrant with the following changes. One, in Section 3A, remove the comma following the first occurrences of, quote, premises, end quote, and add a comma following the words, quote, limited to, end quote, in the third line. Two, in the fifth and sixth line of 3A, remove the duplicate occurrence of, quote, underage persons, end quote, preceding, quote, do not consume, end quote. Three, omit Section 7, quote, regulations, end quote, and renumber Sections 8, Section 8 as Section 7, and Section 9 as Section 8. Four, in the new Section 7, after, quote, first offense, end quote, add $300. After, quote, second offense, quote, add $300. And after third, quote, third and subsequent offense, add, quote, $300. Five, add, change all italics to roman type, except in the definitions. And that, I think, needs to be added. And six, remove the word, quote, sources, end quote, and the list of sources at the end of the article. All these changes-
Just a moment. Let's wait for a second. And let me clarify the motion, if you will. It seems very confusing, but not quite as complicated as it sounds. The first two changes are in Section 3A. And the first one simply removes a comma that precedes a restrictive clause. To make it clear, that is, in the first occurrence of premises, if you look in 3A, it is the duty of any person having control of any premises, comma, who knowingly hosts, permits, or allows a gathering, et cetera. It should say, any person, no comma, who knowingly hosts, because it's a restrictive clause. It indicates what kind of person you're talking about. You're talking about a person who allows a, who allows a gathering. And the second one is a comma following the word limited to, is just setting off the, but not limited to phrase, to be consistent with the way it was used previously. And then number two, underage persons, it just repeated, underage persons, underage persons, by accident, that's removed. And then there's renumbering. Section 7 is omitted, and the two subsequent sections are renumbered. Four is a substantive one, which adds the actual fines or penalties after each offense. Five, gets rid of a lot of extra italics. And six, removes the sources that are at the end of the article. Okay? That's just to save Ms. Stein the trouble of explaining all that, and I'll let her speak now.
Well, all those changes are just to put the article in the correct format for a bylaw. A little history. The bylaw subcommittee of the campus and community coalition that created this article felt that the current town bylaws did not deal adequately with the issues arising from alcohol abuse. They were particularly concerned with underage drinking and with the disturbances arising from socialization, partying, by a small percentage of students. The committee of five had representatives from the town, the university, the police, as well as the landlord. Moreover, the committee looked at the bylaws of other colleges and communities. Hadley has already passed this bylaw. If town meeting passes this article tonight, it will bring conformity between the two towns on these issues. A brief description of this confusing article now follows. In the first section, definitions, the kinds of actions that constitute a public nuisance are spelled out, and they describe very well the kinds of concerns that this article is addressing. The second section states that underage persons are not to consume alcohol unless they are with a parent. Sections 3 to 6 affix responsibility to the person who hosts or permits a gathering to make sure no underage drinking occurs, and says that should such underage drinking occur, it is unlawful. It also states that gatherings that become public nuisances can lead to citation and arrest. Each time a public nuisance occurs, the property owner shall be notified by the police or other officials. If a third offense occurs in a year, the property owner is liable unless the owner can show that he or she is actively trying to evict the troublesome tenant. First and second responses by the police to such nuisances can result in fines to the person giving the party, the persons who organize the party, and the persons attending the party. A third offense by the same people on the same property in one year can result in fines for the landlord, as well as all the people involved in the gathering. Please see Sections 6A through D. Section 7 has been removed because it applied to Hadley, not Amherst, and it's a residue from working with Hadley. Section 8 allows the bylaw to be enforced either as a criminal complaint or a noncriminal disposition, depending on the severity of the offense. It specifies the amount of fines as $300 for both a criminal complaint and for a noncriminal disposition. This fine, which is the state maximum, is meant to be a real deterrent, an attempt to modify future behavior. Since a springtime weekend of nuisance behavior cost the town $15,000 once, the fines collected would help a little to pay for some of the costs incurred. The select board voted unanimously to support this article, and although I spoke to it, two members of the committee at least are here who can help answer any questions that you might have when the discussion starts.
Ms. Stein, can you just clarify one thing for me? In aid enforcement, which is now seven, first offense, $300, second offense, $300, third offense, we have all the same?
Yes.
Okay.
There is no sliding scale.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. Mr. Steinberg for the finance committee.
The finance committee voted six to nothing to support this article, which has been explained to you by Ms. Stein. It will impose liability on property owners and other responsible parties when there is disruptive event requiring a significant police response at considerable cost to the town. The bylaw provides for fines and recovery of response costs, as well as administrative expenses. While revenue generation is not a goal for this bylaw, it will be possible when warranted. More significantly, we hope it will deter behavior that leads to expenditures of considerable police time and will decrease pressure on scheduling and overtime.
So further discussion before we come to a vote on this bylaw. Mr. Tharp.
Kent, our precinct one. The only thing that bothers me about this, and it's something that bothers me, well, anyway, has to do with, and, response costs. And I just think that's a slope that seems to be edging into the whole idea of recovery costs, you know, for police departments and stuff, and I, you know, it's, it's a little oppressive. And I would hope that, you know, our police department, our town manager boards, everybody would understand that, you know, I have faith maybe in this town. There would be a very weird exception, or there would be an exception why you would charge somebody for the response costs, but I don't like that in the bylaw. You know, if you have an automobile accident and it's your fault, you don't pay for the police coming, you know, to make that response. Or, you know, if you have a fire and you set it accidentally, you know, you don't pay. I mean, we pay our police, we pay for our fire through our taxes. We shouldn't have, you know, that's the way it should be, and that's the way it's always been. And this idea that's starting to seep into the courts, and frankly, for some of you may know me, the primary experience I've had with this is doing a peaceful, nonviolent protest, and then the prosecutor then wanting to add on to the arrest of that, or the conviction of that, the costs for, you know, doing, for exercising, you know, free speech, even though I was exercising it in a way our, you know, forefathers exercised it by, you know, making it a little against the rules. But I just don't think, I'm sorry I'm so long-winded about this, but it's something I feel strongly about. I just don't think that we should put into things response costs unless it's, you know, really necessary.
Ms. Stein.
I did tie those two things together, but remember what I said first. If it is not a substantial fine, it will not act as a deterrent. And what we're really trying to do here is modify behavior, make it painful enough so that they won't repeat what has been an ongoing problem of being a public nuisance. So that's, that's the major thrust.
Mr. Woodhull.
Al Woodhull, precinct two. This is an academic community, and there's an implication here which may not, I'm not sure this would be so much for Hadley. Let me tell you my own personal experience. I have been in the position of being an unwilling absentee landlord, because on a couple of occasions during that time when I was teaching at Hampshire College, I had sabbaticals, and I had full bike, full bike grants, and I was in a foreign country, and I could not afford to not rent out my house. So I think this kind of thing probably happens to a lot of people. Now, I went downtown to one of the real estate agencies, and they had a division which managed property, and I asked them to manage my property, to take care of, I can't remember, I believe that my wife and I interviewed the four graduate students who rented our house for the year. But basically, we were incommunicado in Nicaragua for almost a year. We did have email with some reliability, but not much. We chose to drive to Nicaragua, which pretty much made us incommunicado for two to three weeks each way, because that's not a drive you do quickly. And I just wonder, in a situation like this, when a person who is out of the country or otherwise away from home for a long time and feels it necessary to rent his house, would that person be the one who gets the fine? Could the responsibility devolve upon the real estate agent that you had engaged to manage the property for you? I think it would be a bit harsh to come back and find out that some people that you had thought were responsible turned out not to be, or that some neighbor decided they weren't and called the police about something, and to be faced with a fine that you had absolutely no way of controlling. Thank you.
Ms. Stein.
Perhaps Mike Kent of the police department would like to speak to that, if sir-
Captain Kent? Please introduce yourself at the microphone.
Hi. My name is Mike Kent. I work for your police department, and I have for a little over 26 years. Speaking to the first question, on response costs, there's a big difference between an accidental house fire, an accidental car crash, and a party where the officers get there and find 500 kids and five kegs of beer. I would suggest to you, there's, there's really, it's apples and oranges there. As far as the, the second question, you have to remember that the landlord is not brought into this equation until the third offense. He's going to be notified for the first two. I'm sure if a scenario like yours, where you're going to be out of the country, you legally could turn the property over to the management company, and they, on the third offense, or after the second offense and before the third, would start eviction proceedings. And I think, and I sympathize with your situation, but I think you also have to look at if it's a residential house next door with a family of young children, et cetera, being kept awake every night. But you have to remember, that only comes in on the third offense. And that being said, when this bylaw was crafted, 99% of the landlords in this town, great. On North Amherst, we have tremendous cooperation. You know, I would say they do a lot of best practices that other communities could follow, who are having problems with their landlords. And I've been to conferences where I brought it up, and other police departments are amazed at cooperation, where, going into our busy weekends in May, I was on the phone at 3:15 with a landlord from North Amherst on Friday afternoon, because she had received information about a party that she heard could be a large one, and she wanted to make sure I was aware of it. They're good, good, hard-working landlords. Part of the problem is, there are some in town, and there are the few, and I have an example here, I'm not going to name specifics, but it's a gentleman from the eastern part of the state who owns four properties on one street, and last school year, from September 1, 07 to May 22, we had 21 noise complaints to his residents and nine arrests for noise-related offenses. So perhaps with a bylaw like this, he would look to the other owners in North Amherst for best practices, because my guess is, he could be doing more. And again, I think you have to put yourself living next door to this house. It could be in your residential neighborhood, it could be that person that can't sell their house and is moving out of state, so they're going to rent it. So I just think this is another tool for the police and the community in general to use to try and, you know, best practice, best behavior, and accountability, that's what it comes down to. Thank you.
Mr. Freed.
Gordon Freed, precinct six. I just wonder if this, the way it's written, it's limiting to requiring alcohol to be present.
Can anyone answer whether alcohol has to be present?
Well, that certainly is the way the article is written. It was put together by people who work on alcohol and other drug abuses, and you raise an issue of, there is some bylaw already about noise, I believe, but if not, we can certainly make one.
Yes, sir.
Craig Boiso, precinct four. I do not disagree with Captain Kent when his, in his comment of using this as a tool, or having this as a potential tool to have in his tool bag in order to straighten things out. And the comment made by Ms. Stein with changing behavior, I take that in my argument. I fundamentally disagree with this, only from the perspective of self-responsibility. Everybody in this room is responsible for their own actions. And if we have students, we have citizens, we have people who are not doing that, then I think that we might need to look at the rules or the laws in which that we have to govern said actions. So I would vote against this, even though they've made some arguments.
I'm going to, okay, chief.
Charlie Sharp, Amherst Police Department. I just want to bring a point across here. This is a collaborative between the university and the Amherst Police Department. And I would like to know, I would like you to recognize the university part, Sally Linowski, if that's possible, to give her explanation of how much work, and how much planning, and how much thought went into this, this collaboration that we have, to try to control what is getting out of control. We're trying to keep our numbers down, trying to keep the money down, and we're trying a way of responsibility and accountability to not only the people that are involved, but the people that are making the money, that are renting. And as the captain said, and I admire everything he said, and he did a wonderful job here, it's a small handful, but those are the ones that just don't get it. It's not the big of complexes. We have all the work. We have all the support from those complexes. So if, if possible, I'd like to have the university representative acknowledged here. Thank you.
I will recognize her in a minute, but I did tell Mr. Duncan I would recognize him. So I'll take Mr. Duncan first. Are you a registered voter of Amherst?
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
My name is Chris Duncan. My remarks are perhaps a little redundant with some of the things that have been said, but I'm not going to wing it. I'll go with my prepared statements. Thank you for listening. I've lived in Amherst for 10 years. I'm a former professor at UMass, and I'm owner of a consulting business in town. I have four children. I'm in the awkward position of understanding and supporting the aims of Article 40, but disagreeing with key aspects of the proposal. I'm aware that much time and thought has been put into this, and I appreciate that. Know that I support the goals. I just, like others, have some concerns with how it's done. My concerns stem from personal experiences as well, that make me wary of how it might be applied in practice. In December 06, with the imminent arrival of our fourth child, we moved to a larger house off, from, away from East Pleasant Street, and for a variety of reasons, we decided to rent that, those premises. Soon thereafter, we were confronted by formerly friendly neighbors who screamed at us vehemently that we can't put the place up for rent, that it's not possible, that it's their neighborhood, and it's too full of tenants. And it was a very disturbing encounter. Shortly thereafter, we got a letter from a lawyer on behalf of unspecified neighbors complaining about a number of issues with our, with our tenants, with our rental, none of which were true. And subsequently, I've become aware that this kind of reflexive animosity towards tenants and landlords and rentals is not rare in Amherst. My practical concern is that the proposed language of the bylaw is vague and redundant, which can create confusion as to the law's purpose and scope, and invite misuse or abuse. Specifically, there's insufficient definition of what constitutes an infraction, and who gets to make that determination. Both the definition of public nuisance and the three-strike schedule of liability are unclear in that way. As written, it sounds as though a mere call to the police within a plate might constitute a, quote unquote, "police response," so the potential for abuse by reflexively hostile neighbors is substantial. The bylaw redundantly proscribes already illegal activity, such as Section 2 on the consumption of alcohol. This is distracting and adds nothing to the town's ability to restrict nuisance behavior. The town and its residents need bylaws that are clear, concise, and Article 40 is not there yet. I also take issue, as another gentleman did, in that the article proposes to hold me, as landlord, responsible for the behavior, the illegal activities of independent adults. The behavior of adults is their own responsibility. If they're breaking laws, then the town should take police and legal action against them. If the law is defining these illegal activities and penalties are insufficient, they should be strengthened. If they're not being adequately enforced, then the town should step up enforcement. To come after me as landlord, to chase away tenants and recover town costs, is misguided and does not add significant disincentive to any renters likely to be creating a nuisance. If the town insists that I'm indeed responsible, I would insist that it be extended to other parties who are, quote unquote, equally responsible for the presence and behavior of nuisance tenants, the town of Amherst, the parents, and if they're students, the university. I would hope that it's obvious that the responsibility properly rests with the adults themselves, including the hosts of a gathering, if such is the setting in which the behavior occurs. Thank you.
Representative of the university, would you come forward, please? Are you a registered voter of Amherst?
I'm not.
Okay. Just identify yourself, and we'll just take a quick vote.
Hello. I'm Sally Linowski. I'm co-chair of the campus community coalition to reduce high-risk drinking, and I work at the University of Massachusetts Amherst.
Holes in favor of hearing Ms. Linowski, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. You may proceed. It's a three-minute limit.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to speak to the, the nature and intent of this bylaw, and sort of bring people a little bit up to speed in terms of what the campus and community coalition's mission is. Our mission is to promote safety and public safety for our community, including our campus. It's important to note that this bylaw is a collaborative effort between the university and the towns of Amherst and the town of Hadley, which already has approved this bylaw in its town. And the intent is not to punish landlords or to hold individuals responsible for, for actions which are not public nuisances. When we're talking about a public nuisance, the nature of student parties has changed. It's important to recognize, with cell phone technology, text messaging technology, it is not uncommon for within five minutes for there to be 400 to 500 people, young people, gathered outside a residence in a community neighborhood with bottles, public urination, drinking, loud noise, blocking traffic, all the sorts of things that can cause neighborhood disturbances. We are not talking about small parties, which are moderate, which are in control, and under which the social hosts have responsibility or are controlling the nature of the behavior of their guests. It's also important to note that students on our campus are being held accountable to stricter sanctions. The university has tightened its alcohol policies. The town of Amherst and the towns of Hadley have tightened their policies to address nuisance and illegal and underage drinking behaviors. So this does give the police an additional tool. It also gives the university an additional tool, as we're educating students about being good citizens, when they move into our community, when they move off campus, the expectations that they will be held to as being a good member of a community, and contributing to all the vital aspects of the town of Amherst and the life that we all enjoy here in this academic community. So I wanted to speak to that, and also to, to let people know that the efforts that we have in place since 2005 are working. We have reductions in our heavy episodic drinking rates among our students, underage binge drinking is down by 14%, and our frequent heavy drinkers, that rate is down by 26%. And that is because of the comprehensive approach that we have. We've taken policy and enforcement as our agenda from the outset, knowing that's where you get the biggest bang for the buck. But it doesn't stop there. We have screening and brief intervention programs for our policy violators. We have a social norms campaign. We have an online alcohol education course for our students. And this is something that we can bring to the communities, to let folks know that we hold our students to standards if they violate town laws, if they violate the code of student conduct- if they violate town laws, if they violate the Code of Student Conduct off-campus, they are held accountable. So we ask for your support in considering this and let you know that this is a community and campus coalition that has brought this forth to protect the public safety and the goodwill of all.
Captain Kent.
It's always tough following a PhD. I really got to sign smart now. You know, Greg, to your question of accountability, I agree with you, and I think if we didn't make this clear, part of this, in particular, the landlord section, a landlord in North Amherst of a major complex basically crafted that. I think what we're hoping here, and again, particularly in North Amherst, I think our landlords have done one heck of a job. I'm hoping that this fellow on the street that I mentioned earlier might take a look when he hears about this and say, geez, I better start some of these practices. We currently notify every landlord in town of a noise disturbance, single-family house, complex, just a regular one. Even the officer goes and just gives a verbal warning. We mail a note, you know, just kind of a heads-up. Many of the landlords, and just about all of the North Amhersts, weekly, Monday morning, we try and get them out quick, so they have them by Tuesday, they're calling these kids in and just having to talk to them. You know, even if we didn't take action against them, hey, the police were here, it was 2:00 in the morning, obviously, there was an issue. That's what I'm hoping this bylaw will do. So a fellow like this, who I would suggest does have some accountability in the fact that we were at his residence 20, or his house's 21 times, and we did, we arrested nine of his tenants, so they were held accountable. But I'm hoping that this bylaw, the few landlords that aren't up to speed may start practicing the best practices, you know. You can come up with scenarios all day long, what-if, what-if, but I think the long and the short of it, you get a landlord to start putting a little more TLC in with his tenants, calling him in, letting him know he's on top of it, clean up the trash, you know, empty the dumpsters, don't park on the front lawn, I think it can go a long way. And I don't think that's asking too much. So, you know, there is accountability with the tenants, yes, but I also think there should be accountability with the landlords, and that's why this is the third strike when they're called in.
Gentlemen in the back there, yes. Former school committee member, I can't think of your name.
Tom Flitty, Precinct 3. I'm just wondering if any, I generally support this, but I'm wondering if any thought was ever given to licensing keg parties, requiring the kids to come into the Police Department and actually get a permit for a keg party so that the liquor stores can't issue or can't sell a keg without seeing a permit. That way, the Police Department would know who the kids were holding the party, and they would know where the party was before it started.
That's not in this bylaw, I don't believe. Town manager?
There is a bylaw, thank you, Mr. Moderator, there is a bylaw presently that requires that kegs be registered in the Select Board's office, and that occurs presently.
Ms. Gray.
Carol Gray, Precinct 7. I'm concerned about some of the fine print here, and I recognize that parties can get out of hand and that it's a challenge for the police, and we should definitely work on this issue. However, I've practiced criminal law for years, and it's the little points in the language of the law that can make a lot of difference in how it's implemented. And the points that I'd like to raise are, one of the Select Board members mentioned that you want to have deterrence in the law, so if, so the response cost, for example, would be a deterrent. Well, but the response costs are going to be imposed, like may be imposed, for even the first offense. So if this is the first time the police have come out for this issue, there could be response costs. And there's no cap on response costs. It just says response costs may also be assessed. Response costs, if you have two or three police cars with a couple of officers in each car, could really mount into the hundreds, much more than the actual fine. Also, Part B of that section says that the response cost can be assessed to the person or persons who organized or sponsored such gathering. So if you host a party and someone, without your knowledge, gets out of control, and this is the first time it's ever happened, you could be responsible. And that part of the law says that people are jointly and severally responsible for fines. So let's say the person that was really out of hand is dirt poor and can't pay anything. Well, they can go after the person who hosted the party and was really offended that the person got out of hand, but wasn't able to stop it before the police came. It also looks to me like they could even go after the owner on the first offense. Section A says that they can get costs as well from the person or persons residing on or otherwise in control of the property. Well, I think that arguably could be the owner of the house, the person in control of the property. Also, there, it says that this bylaw shall be enforced by a criminal complaint in District Court. Well, anytime you're bringing a criminal complaint in District Court, you're talking about a lot of costs for the town. You're talking about prosecutors to fill out a criminal complaint, court officers, court clerks to process the file, a criminal defense attorney if the person can't afford to hire one themselves. You're talking about thousands of dollars of court costs just by bringing one complaint. The fact that there are nine people prosecuted, that case is probably costing thousands and thousands of dollars. Anyway, and I'm also just concerned about, we should deal with this problem, but I would like to see more language in a law that was gauged at mediation and restorative justice and principles that are part of what our community cares about and not so focused on criminalizing. I think that those other avenues are better for community building, and I'd like to see this law worked on to incorporate some of those ideas. And so I'd urge you to vote no.
Captain Kent.
Yeah, just to clarify, there is a criminal aspect to this. That would be, I'll give you the scenario, the officers arrive, and while they're addressing the disturbance, a serious assault take place. In that instance, they would be charged criminally, obviously, for the serious assault, and the social host ordinance would also be tagged on. We anticipate writing tickets, keeping this a civil infraction, and on-the-spot fine. That's the whole point of it, try and get an impact right away. We don't anticipate the majority of these, you know, going to criminal court. It's going to be a civil bylaw. We have a, the keg bylaw is similar, where you write a ticket. So I just wanted to clarify that. We are anticipating immediate impact, the officers writing a town bylaw ticket for $300 at the scene and handing it to the offender, whoever that may be. So I just want to clarify that. The majority are not going to court.
Ms. Stein.
It's my understanding that the town attorney read and approved this article.
Way there by the wall.
Durinda Vineham Lewis, Precinct 3. I'm also at UMass Amherst. I'm a Residence Hall Director, so I get to live with all these people we're talking about. Bless me. We, what Sally was talking to you about earlier is very, very true. The restorative justice that we have on campus works for us, works very well, actually. And the students, when it hits their pockets and they have to pay that fine, and that fine went from $50 to $100 on their first offense, a lot of, we saw a huge change. We saw students think twice about drinking on campus. We saw them think twice about vandalizing. We saw them think twice about their actions before they did things on campus that could cause them to get into trouble. So it was a breath of fresh air for those of us who have to sit down and listen to judicial cases on a regular basis. And in my building, which is not in Southwest, I hear somewhere between 50 and 125 cases a semester. Those cases have anywhere between 2 and 12 people in them. I hear a lot of cases, and I have a lot of other things to do on top of that. Again, bless me. So for me to say that this article isn't important would be a slap in the face to everything that I believe in. This is such an important, important article, and I need you to understand it from this perspective. If they were to take away the fines that we charge our students right now, and if I walked in tomorrow and told my students, hey, guess what? You guys can drink on campus now, and I'm not going to charge you judicially, and you don't have to go to basics, and you don't have to pay $100, my building would be in an uproar. It would be ridiculous. Do you remember those riots we had? Guess what, folks? They'd be back with the vengeance. It would be ridiculous. I want you to think about that. I want you to think about restorative justice. It's not criminal. It's restorative justice. Hit them where it counts, their pockets. If they understand there's a just cause, there's a consequence to their action, you do something wrong, we're going to make you pay, they'll think twice about doing it. They can't do it on campus, guess what? They're going into town to do it. You don't want them to do it in town because it's in your backyard. Not my backyard, I live with them. They don't do it in my building anymore. Now they're doing it in your backyard. So think about them doing it in your backyard. You don't want them doing it in your backyard. Then therefore, support this, not having them do it in your backyard. It's not going to hurt you as a landlord. It's going to make your life that much better because you're not going to have to clean up those beer cans and all those other wonderful things the next morning because it's gotten out of control. Consider it. Think about it. Think about it from the nuisance point of view, not from the landlord point of view. Nuisance, that's the underlying words there. Thank you.
Mr. O'Keefe.
Jonathan O'Keefe, Precinct 9. I call the question.
Previous questions removed, and seconded, two-thirds of you shall vote yes. We'll come to immediate vote on the motion before us. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is carried. We'll come to immediate vote on the bylaw, on the motion that's before you, which moves the adoption of the nuisance bylaw. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes seem to have it. We'll have a tally vote. This is vote number two for the 28th of May. Please be sure you have May 28th, vote number two, green for yes, red for no. The yes votes are 127, the no votes are 34. The motion is passed. Article 32 zoning bylaw, Main Street Dickinson Street, High Street rezoning. See if the town will amend the official zoning map to change the zoning designation.